By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Concha Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Steph, if you could do your roll call, please.
Yes, President Leonard. Councilmember Titino?
Present.
Councilmember Serna?
Present.
Councilmember Kingsley?
Present.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Elam?
Here.
Vice President Sakalowski?
Here.
President Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Aronson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Vice President Sakalowski, could you prepare for council, please?
Sure. Would everybody please rise? O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds, our wills, with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people that we represent.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before our regularly scheduled council meeting this evening, council did have an executive session on property and legal matters. The first item on the agenda is under land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. Mr. Peters, I will turn that over to you.
Thank you, President Leonard. If we could please go on the record at this time. This is the scheduled date and time for the hearing on the petition for intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license into the borough. The petitioner is the Brover, B-R-O-V-E-R, Group LLC, for use at a restaurant located at 16 East First Avenue in the borough. The liquor license is sought to be transferred from Whitpain Township and is license number R-16167. The hearing this evening is for purposes of council, asking any questions, providing any comments they may have, as well as the public to do the same. And with that, I will turn it over to the petitioner's counsel, Mr. McCreech, to present and give you some information. Sir.
My name is John J. McCreech III. I'm an attorney, and I specialize in the alcohol beverage industry. It is true, we are moving this license to this location, which was already licensed at 16 East First Street and has been licensed for many years. You probably know it as the Lucky Dog. It is a transfer in the sense that the people who own the Lucky Dog are moving someplace else and want to take their license with us, with them. We don't want to operate a restaurant without a liquor license for obvious reasons. I have Debbie Berdor here, and I have her sworn in. She'll give you a little background. Raise your right hand.
State's title, full name?
It's Deborah, D-E-B-O-R-A-H, Berdor, B-R-O-D-E-U-R.
Sounds like a testimony about the issue of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
You are the general manager for the Brover Group?
Yes.
Is that how you pronounce it?
Group.
Whatever. Give me those menus, and I'll pass them around. And you tell everybody about yourself and your husband.
Sure. So, good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us here tonight. Again, my name is Debbie Berdor. I'm going to be the operations manager for Daniels, which will be the name of the new restaurant that we'll be opening. What we're distributing is some information on us and what we plan to do there. In a nutshell, we're going to try to take it up a notch from where it was. We want to improve it and have a more of an upscale atmosphere. We realized that the Lucky Dog was impacted by COVID like everybody else, but their menu had continued to diminish to the point where they only had four entrees in the dining room, and most of their business was in the bar and the pub area. Our goal is to improve on all of that, to add to the menu, to have a much more expansive menu. My husband, Dan, is the chef. He'll tell you a little bit more about his background. And I do have a menu from one of our previous restaurants. We've been in the business for many, many years, and our goal is essentially to do some renovations that are going on right now. Essentially, we're painting and just improving, just making it look a little bit nicer inside. We've been meeting with Jack Cole, and we're going to be getting some historical photos of Concha Hocken that we're going to be displaying throughout the building as part of our decorations. We're very big on supporting the local community. We will be also saving some space in the dining room to feature local artists who might want to show their work and sell their work here. We're also, you know, meeting with some of the other local businesses to see who we can partner with. I know we have meetings set up with the bakery and anyone else that, you know, that we can work with, Concha Hocken Brewery, we already met with. We do have 21 taps, so we have plenty of room to feature lots of local brews. So, we are a couple that gets involved in the community. If you look through that, you'll see as part of Dan's resume, a list of awards and a list of involvements. We've always been very involved in the community. We'll be involved in the Restaurant Association, and any, you know, activities that the borough has, we want to be a part of.
Do you have any questions about this, Berdor?
Did you say that you have another location?
No, we have had other locations.
Okay.
But nothing, nothing open right now.
So, this would be the only one?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Anyone else on council have any questions?
Okay. And we'll turn it over. Dan?
Raise your right hand.
State's title, full name?
Daniel James Berdor, B-R-O-D-E-U-R.
Sounds like a testimony about the issue of the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
How long have you been in the restaurant and tavern business?
Well, lucky enough, John, I grew up in the restaurant business. From the time I was 12 years old, my parents bought their first restaurant and haven't left the kitchen really since.
Which place did you own yourself?
Um, myself, my last restaurant I owned was Brodeur's on State Street in Media. Previously, I owned Brodeur's Country House Inn in Middletown Township. Prior to that, I owned, in addition to, at the same time, I owned the Providence Restaurant and Bar, which is in Secane, Delaware County. Grew up in the family restaurant business. My parents started in 1976. The Belmont Inn and Vermont Pizza. So, pretty well-rounded.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Now, where do you work?
My last job was executive chef of the Otzi Ballroom, which is a union hall down in South Philadelphia, a 370-seat facility, that, very, very popular venue down in South Philadelphia.
Just tell them a couple of the items you're going to, you know, the ones that I like, the upscale.
Well, I'm known for my crab cakes. Won Best of the Main Line, four years running with those. Won Best Crab Cake in the State of Pennsylvania a number of years ago. Also have been awarded Best of the Main Line 16 times in my career for cuisine, service, and beverages.
Anybody have any questions?
Are you looking to run lunch and dinner, brunch? What are you looking to run?
We are looking to run all the above. At first, we're just trying to start out slow because of the COVID help situation, and we're going to try to get our feet wet with Wednesday through Sunday, maybe three or four to midnight, depending on what the business brings. And as the weather breaks and as this world maybe gets back to a little bit of normalcy, we would expand into lunch and to definitely Sunday brunch, which a number of years ago I won Best of Philly for my brunch, so I think we'll bring a nice spread to the table.
I'd just like to hear in your own words, why Concha Hocken and why now?
Why Concha Hocken right now? Why Concha Hocken? We were, we had never really been, spent a lot of time in Concha Hocken. We looked all over Montgomery County for locations because we really felt this area was where we wanted to be. Being a longtime Delaware County people, I was looking for a challenge to come somewhere else and do what I do. We looked at a number of locations, and this location right downtown here is just really, really exciting to us. We see that, we see the growth that's going on around us, and we want to be, want to be part of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
That's it. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say welcome to Concha Hocken.
Thank you.
And we do love a good crab cake, so we're looking forward to it.
Sign that resolution, and we'll come.
All right. At this time, are there any members of the public that would like to offer questions, comments, or recommendations? And we'll note for the record that there was no response. Just for the record, P1 is a 12-page document titled Concha Hocken Daniels Restaurant and Bar with some information regarding the restaurant. Borough council, with that, the hearing can be closed at this time. Before you is a resolution, Resolution Number 2022-01. That is a resolution approving the petition for intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from Whitpain Township for license number R-16167 to the property located at 16 East First Avenue in the borough of Concha Hocken. If you're inclined, the appropriate motion would be to adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much to the applicant, and thank you to our court reporter, who we can let go home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And welcome aboard.
Crab cakes, I know.
Do we get samples?
Yeah.
It's not fair to put color pictures in.
I know.
That's what I was saying.
President Leonard, would you like me to continue with the ordinances?
I would love for you to continue, Mr. Peters.
Okay. You have four ordinances under consideration this evening, all of which we've talked through several times over the last few months, but they have been advertised and now are before you for consideration. The first ordinance is Ordinance 01-2022, Establishing Animal Control Regulations. That ordinance amends the animal control regs for the borough, making clear that off-leash animals are prohibited, placing requirements for the cleaning up of pet waste, providing for no feeding of feral cats where it creates a nuisance or feral cat colonies. It creates the position of animal control officer, contains a tiered fine system, and also creates a private cause of action for purposes of violations of the ordinance. That is the first ordinance that's before you this evening, and it is ready for a vote.
So, I would need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The second ordinance is Ordinance 02-2022, Establishing To-Go Parking Spaces Within the Borough. As we discussed several times, this makes permanent the 15-minute to-go parking located at the east side of Fayette Street between First and Second. There are four spaces. The east side of Fayette Street between Second and Third, there are three spaces. And on East First Avenue between Fayette and Harry Street, there is one space. These spaces were previously the subject of temporary regulations, and this evening the ordinance would make them permanent for the time being.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next ordinance is Ordinance 03-2022, Clarifying Fire Services Personnel. This ordinance clarifies the organizational structure of the fire department and the chain of command, and that structure is fire chief, deputy fire chief, two assistant fire chiefs, battalion chief, and two safety officers. The ordinance does make your code of ordinance is consistent with how the fire department actually runs with the addition of the battalion chief.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the last ordinance is Ordinance 04-2022, Amending the Collection Practices for Solid Waste and Recycling. This ordinance is part of a grant program that you received with respect to your recycling program. The ordinance amends the borough's ordinance to reflect how you're actually collecting garbage now, which is through the use of borough-issued toders. The only other brand-new provision addresses electronic waste and how to get rid of electronic waste. This ordinance has been advertised and is ready for your consideration this evening.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, President Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. The next item on the agenda under presentation is the swearing-in of the animal control officers, battalion chief, and a fire police officer. Mayor Aronson, I will gladly turn that over to you.
Why would you like this?
We have Tracy first.
Oh. I, Tracy Daywell.
I, Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. John?
I, John Daywell.
I, John Daywell.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. I, Ann Margaret Daywell.
I, Ann Margaret Daywell.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. Does the midget want to do it, too?
No. Definitely not.
Thank you.
How about it, Deb?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Really? Steve, are you ready?
Right. First time.
Oh, nice guy.
Why would I even ask for that question?
I, Steen Young.
I, Steen Young.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Morrison.
I'm Morrison.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Steen Young.
I'm Steen Young.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Evan Morrison.
I'm Evan Morrison.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this common law. And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Evan Morrison.
I'm Evan Morrison.
Usain Missoula.
Usain Missoula.
That I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation on the DCNR grant application for the Suckliff Park Walking Trail Replacement Project. Ms. Erezary and Ms. Stetler, if you could come up, please. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Doing well.
Good. So, tonight, Chris and I come before you, more as informational and to ask you some questions. We are looking to replace the walking trail at Suckliff Park. The trail circles the park and is just under one mile. It was first constructed around 97, 98, from what Chris has told me, and it's been well-used since then. On any given weeknight in the spring, summer, fall, even in the wintertime, if the weather's nice, and especially on the weekends, you'll find many people using it, all ranging in different ages, from younger to old moms with strollers, just people of all ages. Over the years, the trail has deteriorated. You can see by the pictures that Brittany has up. It is cracking. It's becoming uneven in many locations. Tree roots have even uprooted the surface. It's becoming a safety issue, in my opinion, and I think, you know, this is why we're here before you tonight. The project would include the trail being demoed, graded, resurfaced, with stormwater management in mind, because some of those cracking, some of those cracks are from the stormwater. This project would be a potential capital item for the Recreation Department, Recreation and Parks Department for 2023. But in the meantime, with the help of Chris, we'll be applying for the DCNR grant. For those of you that don't know what DCNR is, it's the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. It needs to be submitted by the beginning of April 2022. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and she's going to review the grant and the process for that with you.
Thank you. It's nice to see you all.
Nice to see you, too, Chris.
We are applying, we will be submitting, hoping to submit a grant through the DCNR Conservation Community, Community Conservation Partnership Program, which is called C2P2. It needs to reflect the goals of the department and the state for recreation, which is really not that difficult, because the basic goal is to provide recreation for all. This is a very involved grant. The grant period opened yesterday. As Lauren said, the grant applications are due on the 6th of April. This will be a development project that are broken into several categories, and the development project includes community park rehabilitation, and this is a priority for the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. We also have another priority, which neither of us knew about until we talked to DCNR, and that is because many, many years ago, DCNR funded the development of fields at the park with the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So, that gives us an additional priority, which we hope will help us in this. The funding range, the funding for this grant ranges from $100,000 to $250,000. It requires a dollar-for-dollar match, so that if we got $100,000, the borough would have to put up $100,000. Applications are due April the 6th. There is a long review process. They will not make awards until the fall of 2022. In fact, at the beginning of this month, they just announced the grants for 2021. Contracts are estimated to begin in the spring and summer of 2023, hence that's why it's part of the capital budget for 2023. And we should have about four years to complete the project, depending on any changes that the state makes during that time. The important aspects of the application are a detailed site plan and cost estimate, and showing all the work that's going to be done and how it all relates. The scope of services has to relate to what's on the drawing. The cost estimate has to reflect what's in the scope of services, which is on the, which is what on the drawing. They're looking for sustainability, and that would be improvements in the environment, anything that would improve or get reduced or rewarding. So, this is the kind of thing like a stormwater management to prevent the cracks that you saw in the side of the trail and the upheaval, which is probably all due to water. There has to be a maintenance plan, which I don't think we'll have a problem with at all, and primarily, we have to show the urgency, the need, and the benefits to the community, which is a lot of statistical information and how it fits in with various plans. And one of the things that they are looking for, which we're coming to you for to begin tonight, is public input. The state is incredibly interested that the walking trail is used by the community, that people have the opportunity to comment on what they think about it, what they think should be improved. And so, what we're asking tonight is to open that process and ask for opinions on the walking trail, what you think needs to be improved, any kind of other amenities that might be needed, and anything that could be done to improve the use of the trail. So, with that said, if, we would ask for your comments tonight. If you go home and then have a brilliant flash of insight, please contact Lauren or I, so that we can include this in. This is one of several things we'll be doing to show public input. So, if you have any questions on the grant process or the trail use, we'd be happy to answer them, and we'd be happy to have your comments.
Chris?
One second. When you talk about some of the ideas for other amenities to add to that, or is the focus only on improving?
Use your mic.
Thank you.
Is the only opportunity of what we're looking at is repairing, improving the trail itself?
Yes.
Or adding anything along the way, like some of those little fitness stops or, well, I know we have a fitness court now, but...
Yeah, there's a lot of fitness stuff at the park. I think the only thing we discussed with DC, the DC, we've already met with the DCNR regional manager, because that's one of the things they tell you to do. The focus on this is to completely reconstruct the trail, demolish it, new base, new surface, new stormwater management. Possibly, depending on the cost, maybe a couple of benches, but not a lot, because you're running out of room in the park, and you want, you don't want to take up room for things, like maybe a couple of spots where if someone's got a stroller and wants to sit down for a bit, or if someone older wants to just go out and rest between it. This is a very unique trail. It not only circulates or goes around the entire park, you have a path in the middle. So, you can break this trail up into three different trails, so you can pick your exercise based on what you can do, what you want to do, how much time you have. But no, this would not be on, we haven't talked about anything like fitness stations because you have the fitness court now. And want to be careful to leave what space is there for whatever Lauren is going to need in the future.
I don't know. Maybe we already have this. Is there signage to say that this loop is one mile?
No, and that is something that DCNR suggested, so I think this would probably include some signage. I think we have to do, we have to do a sign acknowledging, if the grant is awarded, we have to do a sign acknowledging that the state supported this and the borough. And we have to have a sign that acknowledges the land and water conservation program, which we've never done, but nobody ever knew we needed to, because nobody ever knew they had funded this. And it was suggested that maybe we put some mileage markers, or, you know, steep slope ahead, or, you know, this particular, in this direction, you can go and do a quarter of a mile, in this direction, you can do the full, under, under a mile. Right. So, that is something that was also suggested.
Chris, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has there been any discussion on it being made any wider? Is that not a possibility?
Haven't seen anything yet on that. I don't know how much you want to, because you have some areas, you're in pretty narrow spaces.
Limited, yes.
We, hopefully, will have a very good site plan on this, so, you know, we'll see what they say. I think what we want really is for the width of the path to be consistent.
Okay. And then, and I'm sure this will be discussed as time goes on, but the materials used for it?
Yeah, I think we're...
Has there been discussion on that?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yes, we have discussed it, and based on, you know, cost.
Uh-huh. Which is a big factor, yes.
Yeah, it would be lovely to have something that required very little maintenance. It would be lovely to have something that would be permeable, but that would double the cost.
Right.
And we're not big fans of permeable asphalt, because it requires maintenance, which I don't think is something we would want to take on, and I'm not really sure how long it would last.
Right. Okay. That was where I knew it was going, to cost, also.
You know, the grant application, when it's further along, will be available if someone wants to take a look at it.
Right.
You will also be asked to pass a resolution no later than your March meeting to authorize the submission of this. As I said, it's a bear, so, you know, we started working on this in December, so, in early December.
And I will say, when you say it's a bear, Chris, God bless you, for all of your hard work, for all of these.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tina.
With the short timeline that we really have and the requirement of getting public feedback, do we have a mechanism to collect public feedback through survey tools or open... Chris and I discussed it this week. She wrote up something for the website, but I'm going to look into Survey Monkey to get a survey link on our website, so then we get that feedback faster. So, that's what I'm working on right now.
And I think we had talked about a meeting with friends of, friends of Concha Hocken Parks to get their input and feedback. We can count it as long as it's a nonprofit.
It is, yes.
Like, we could not use a meeting with the Environmental Action Committee, because they're part of the borough. I mean, they're extremely specific on what, what you have to do. You can only cite three plans. You can only get... to do. You can only cite three plans, you can only get three letters of support. It's really, it's very interesting.
Yeah, that survey, hopefully to have it by the end of next week, to get it up on the website, and that, I think, should be enough time. We'll, you know, put an end date for public input, and hopefully we have people go on there and fill that survey out.
Yeah.
Great.
I have one more comment. The trail runs between the baseball fields, and it's sometimes hard with a lot of kids down there to walk. Is there a way to reroute that trail behind the majors field and bring it up across? I know it's degrading, there's a little weird the long Sutcliffe Park drive as you go down the hill.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
But it's, on days that there's Little League down there, there's a ton of people down there, and I don't want inconvenience those walkers.
Yeah.
Having to cut through there, cut through there all the time.
Um...
Go around the field.
Stacy, I don't know, but we can look at it.
Okay.
I have a note.
Okay.
I'm gonna make...
Thank you.
Well, you're right.
And we will have a meeting with the engineering firm that's going to do our site plan, once we get a proposal back from them. So, you know, we can look at what, what changes we may need to want, we may want to make, but that is a very good comment.
Yeah, it's something that I didn't think of, and you're absolutely right with all the players there, and, and thank God, we have all those players. Yes.
Yes.
Anyone else on council have a question?
Chris, I was just thinking in terms of our justification. So, you know, we do have the Conchi 5K that runs on the trail every April, and then we have so many events in the park, like yoga in the park, and we have our tree plantings, and like, all those volunteers would use the trails for those purposes. So, so I think we can make a justification as a community resource.
Can you give me a call, so I can get all this down?
Yeah, of course, happy to.
Yeah, whenever, whenever you're convenient, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
One last, or one comment. With the increased use, and the direction of Sutcliffe, having more types of athletic and physical facilities out, and Karen's direction on mileage markers, I also recommend some sort of way to kind of contract traffic, or like, street signage, not signage. What am I trying to say?
Direction?
Yeah, direction or lanes, even. I know that that kind of helps to keep it from getting, you know, too congested, wherever people are actually trying to exercise versus those are trying to be a little more leisurely, as well as like, you know, someone's coming at you on the trail.
Okay. I've got, I've got that written down. It's kind of like... What?
Kaden Marvins?
Yeah. Maybe it's something I can look into to see if other... Yeah. Okay. Al Gomez.
Okay.
Does anyone here who's attending have any comments on this? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda for this evening. I'm going to read them both, and then just ask for motions singly. The first one is approve and adopt the December 1st and the December 15th regular meeting minutes. The second is approve the December ending treasurer's report and accounts payable. So it'd be seeking from council this evening a motion to approve and adopt the December 1st and December 20th regular meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a motion to approve the December ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of $909,599.15.
I'll make that motion. Sokolowski?
I'll second.
So we have a second by Kathleen Kingsley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, did everybody aye on that? Okay. And all opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business, and I will turn that over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. The Montgomery County St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee has come back into the borough and requested to hold the 2022 annual St. Patrick's Day Parade in Concha Hockin on Saturday, March 12th, with a rain date of Saturday, March 26th. In your meeting materials, on your agenda item, it involved all of the items that the borough would be involved in, in terms of hosting the event. We have had an initial meeting with the parade committee. As usual, it went well. We will be having an in-person meeting to ensure that all emergency management protocols are in place. Nothing out of the ordinary from what historically has been done. We're just excited that we are going to be having the event again in 2022, so I need an official approval from Borough Council via a motion to authorize the Montgomery County St. Patrick's Parade Committee to hold the 2022 annual event on March 12th, with the rain date of March 26th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie, can you do a roll call vote? It may be me, I may not be hearing correctly, but I'm not hearing everyone.
Sure. Councilmember Totino?
Yes, but you still have to make the, the actual yes. Go ahead.
Councilmember Serna?
Yes.
Councilmember Kingsley?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Yes.
President Leonard?
Yes. Thank you, Steph.
Motion carries. The next item, which is incorporated with the St. Patrick's Day Parade, is the St. Patrick's Day Conchi Classic 5K, which is held by the trustees of the Concha Hockin Fire Company Number Two and Bryn Mawr Racing Company. This happens earlier in the day, same thing. It is scheduled for Saturday, March 12th. The rain date is Saturday, March 26th, and the event is in the morning, and the borough will assist with cross advertisement for the race itself, and it begins at 11:00 a.m. So if inclined, I would just need a motion to approve the Conchi Classic 5K.
I'll make that motion. Sokolowski?
I'll second it.
Stacy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
March 12th. Rain date is March 26th. Yes, it's, yes, it's in the morning of, yes. On a regular basis, we update our emergency action plan binder. In order for us to fully update the binder based off of current information, we have to pass a resolution. The last revision was in October of 2021. We're asking that this evening, that the updated version be approved by council through Resolution 2022-02.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We previously, previously discussed and advertised the sale of the ladder truck, the 1999 ladder truck out of Washington Fire Company. It was advertised on municipal bid. It did not receive any bids. It went through the formal private process. We have had the opportunity to sell it directly to Chester County Fire Department. In front of you this evening is consideration to approve Resolution 2020-03, which authorizes the sale to the Chester Fire Department for $30,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Checo, could you just do the rest by roll call votes?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The next item is to approve Seven Tower Bridge Financial Security ESCO Release Number Five in the amount of $49,889.80. Councilmember Totino. Oh, I need a motion, actually, first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Kingsley. All, go ahead, Steph.
Councilmember Totino?
Yes.
Councilmember Serna?
Yes.
Councilmember Kingsley?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Yes.
President Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is to accept the resignation of Todd Camden from the Marywood Park Trust. He is a trustee, and he is moving out of, he is being, he is relocating outside of the borough and is no longer able to serve as a trustee of Marywood Park. I would need a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Totino?
Yes.
Councilmember Serna?
Yes.
Councilmember Kingsley?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Yes.
President Leonard?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item is to consider tuition reimbursements for Detective Walter and Sergeant Murray per the regulations in the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Totino?
Yes.
Councilmember Serna?
Yes.
Councilmember Kingsley?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Yes.
President Leonard?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is a discussion item only. Both, it is specific to the housing rehab program. It is a notice of conflict of interest for the record. Both the HUD and the Department of Community Economic Development require that there be no conflicts of interest in the provision of the rehab assistance using federal funds. Any relationship between an applicant for assistance and elected officials, committee members, or borough staff is considered a potential conflict of interest in order to provide assistance. An exemption may be requested from DCED. Granting the exemption is based on the borough connection, having nothing to do with the operation of the rehab program. The process for applying for an exemption involves public disclosure of the potential conflict of interest, an opinion letter from the borough solicitor stating that no conflict exists. This information is then sent to DCED for a decision. Tim Gunning's mother has applied for the housing rehab program. Her relationship could be seen as a potential conflict of interest. In your meeting materials, you have a letter specifically from your solicitor per the request of the program, which indicates for you on file that, based off of the facts, that there does not present, that they does not present a conflict of interest pursuant to the regulations of the program. Based off that information, we are just publicly required to notify that we've reviewed the regulations, we've found no conflict of interest, we have a letter by the solicitor on file of said no conflict of interest.
Right.
And therefore, we will be proceeding with Miss Gunning through the housing rehab program.
Well, what actually happened, Steph, is it gets submitted to DCED, right, Chris? And they'll, they'll make the formal decision, but I'm quite confident in my analysis, so there should be no issues.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
And then the last item, President Leonard, this evening, we swore in our animal control officers to follow the regulations of the new animal control ordinance, and the last item is to actually formalize the animal control officer agreement. The motion in front of you is to approve the agreement for a period of one year at a cost of $25,000.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Totino? Councilmember Serna?
Yes.
Councilmember Kingsley?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Yes.
President Leonard?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Steph. There are no items left on the agenda. Is there anyone this evening for a public comment? Could you come up to the mic and state your, well, name and actually who you are, but go ahead.
Philip Candlor. I just have a quick question. The last two gentlemen that were sworn in, could you tell us what they were sworn in for?
So they were sworn in for fire officers?
Okay.
Yes. Do you have a question on that?
Okay. That's good.
That's it.
Steve Young is our battalion chief.
Okay.
And then Mike Morrison, I believe it was?
Yes.
Is a new fire police.
Okay, that's all.
We're very excited to have them.
And I'm sorry, for the record, can you just give your address? I forgot to ask for that.
431 East 11th Avenue.
I know it.
Concha Hockin.
Thank you.
No, we're good.
Thank you, Philip.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Mayor Aronson?
Thank you, President Leonard. So to start off, we had Law Enforcement Appreciation Day on January 9th, so I want to take a minute to thank Chief Metz and our Concha Hockin Police Department officers for their service to the borough. It's also a good opportunity to remind residents that they can and should report any issues, big or small, to the department. Chief has hammered that into me, so thank you. The next update really speaks to the teacher in me. The Concha Hockin United Methodist Church is hosting a series of non-faith-based youth groups with virtual and in-person activities. For more information, please contact the church directly, or go to conchiunited.com/youthconnection. I will also post this information on my social media. And finally, we had two resignations from longtime members of the EAC at our last meeting. Thank you to Tim Snyder, who led the revitalization of our Shea Tree team, and Eliza Lanzuti, who worked with administration and council to help pass our Ready for 100 resolution. We know they will both be connected, involved in the borough, and that we'll see them at our next cleanup. And with that, I wish everyone a great rest of January.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Stacy?
I have nothing tonight, President Leonard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
Nothing.
Tina?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Nothing for me either.
Okay. Adrian? Karen? Thank you, everyone. Chief Metz, do you have anything this evening? I did not forget you. I know I do! That's because you're not up here with us anymore. I have to look back. So, thank you very much. With that, I will say, meeting adjourned.